This proposal is highway robbery, and you know it, Harrison. Benjamin Thornhill leaned back in his chair at the head of the scarred oak table, his weathered fingers drumming against the brim of his black felt hat. The mayor was a man of sixty-three years with a silver-streaked beard that caught the afternoon light filtering through the dusty windows of the town hall. His black vest, buttoned tight over a white linen shirt gone slightly yellow at the collar, bore the weight of too many difficult decisions. Highway robbery. Benjamin's mouth twitched at one corner. "Din," coming from a man whose collar's so starched it could stand trial without him, "that's rich." Harrison Cobb's face reddened above his pristine white collar, freshly laundered despite the Montana dust that settled on everything within an hour of washing. The banker sat three seats down, his fingers white-knuckled around a leather portfolio. The sound that followed was small but distinct. Crack. The leg of Mrs. Eleanor Whitmore's chair gave way with a splintering complaint, tilting her sideways. She caught herself against the table's edge with a gasp, her green silk dress rustling like autumn leaves. Several men half rose from their seats, but she waved them off, cheeks pink with embarrassment. "Forgive me," Eleanor said, adjusting her position on the remaining three legs. "But these chairs have seen better days." They all had. Benjamin could remember when this hall was built back in seventy-two, when Copper Falls was nothing more than a hopeful collection of tents and false-front buildings. Twenty-three years later, the town had grown into something resembling civilization, though the furniture hadn't kept pace. "Abii, shall we return to the matter at hand?" This from Reverend Marcus Fielding, whose patience was legendary, except when it came to protracted meetings. He sat with his spine rigid, his black coat buttoned despite the warmth of the room. "The matter," Harrison said, his voice tight, "is that this town needs a new bank building, and the mayor seems to think we can fund it with good wishes and prairie wind." Benjamin allowed himself a longer look at the banker. Harrison Cobb had arrived in Copper Falls three months ago with letters of introduction from a Denver bank and enough capital to buy out the previous establishment. He wore his authority like his tailored suits, conspicuously and without much grace. "What the mayor thinks," Benjamin said mildly, "is that a proposed expenditure of eight thousand dollars requires more scrutiny than you've provided." "Scrutiny?" Harrison's laugh was sharp. "I've provided three estimates from contractors. What more do you want?" "Blood signatures. Transparency would suffice." This came from Eleanor, who had finally settled her chair into a stable position. She was the town's schoolteacher and, by virtue of her late husband's property holdings, one of its larger landowners. Her presence at town meetings was both unusual and, Benjamin had learned, invariably purposeful. The banker's eyes narrowed. "I'm not sure what you're implying, Mrs. Whitmore." "I'm not implying anything." Eleanor's voice remained pleasant, but Benjamin recognized the steel underneath. He'd heard her use that same tone when dealing with unruly students. "I'm stating plainly that your estimates seem remarkably consistent, almost as if they came from the same source." The room fell quiet. Outside, a wagon rattled past, its driver singing something off-key and vaguely obscene. Inside, eleven pairs of eyes turned toward the banker. Benjamin reached for the pitcher of water at his elbow, buying himself a moment to think. The meeting had been routine until Eleanor's observation. Now he could feel the tension crackling like heat lightning before a storm. "And that's absurd," Harrison said, but his voice had lost some of its conviction. "These are reputable firms from Helena and Butte." "Are they?" Eleanor produced a folded paper from her reticule, the small beaded purse catching the light as she moved. "Because I took the liberty of sending a telegram to the Helena Chamber of Commerce yesterday afternoon. Cost me thirty-five cents, but I thought it prudent. They've never heard of Morrison and Sons Construction. Not currently, not historically, not at all." Someone at the far end of the table coughed. Mr. Patterson, the hardware store owner, leaned forward with sudden interest. The atmosphere in the room had shifted from routine boredom to something sharper, more alert. Benjamin could feel it like static electricity before a lightning strike. The silence that followed was profound. Benjamin set down his glass with deliberate care, his eyes fixed on the banker. Harrison had gone pale, then red, then pale again in the span of three seconds. "That's preposterous," Harrison managed, "but sweat had begun to bead on his forehead despite the relative coolness of the room. Your telegram must have been misdirected. These things happen with the new operators they're hiring, young fellows fresh off the farm who can barely distinguish dots from dashes." "I considered that possibility," Eleanor said with the patient tone she used when correcting a student's faulty reasoning. "Which is why I sent two telegrams to each city at different times of day, to ensure at least one would reach a competent operator." The responses were unanimous and quite clear. Curious how all three firms seemed to suffer from the same problem? Eleanor unfolded another paper. "Butte says they know nothing of Callahan Brothers. And as for Western Builders Limited, well, that particular outfit went bankrupt in ninety-one." Benjamin felt something cold settle in his stomach. He'd trusted Harrison's credentials, had welcomed him as an improvement over the previous banker who'd spent more time drunk than sober. Now he was wondering what else he'd missed. "Mr. Cobb," he said quietly, "perhaps you'd like to explain yourself." The banker stood abruptly, his chair scraping against the wooden floor. "I don't have to explain anything to a collection of backward dirt farmers and shopkeepers. This town is lucky I chose to establish myself here instead of somewhere with actual prospects." "Sit down, Harrison," Benjamin's voice remained level, but something in it made several attendees straighten in their seats. "I most certainly will not. This meeting is adjourned as far as I'm concerned." Harrison reached for his portfolio, but his hand trembled slightly. "You'll regret this insult to my professional integrity. My colleagues in Denver will hear about this provincial assault." It was then that Benjamin noticed something he'd been too distracted to see before. On the wall behind Harrison, pinned among the various town notices advertising land sales and upcoming dances, was a wanted poster. He'd glanced at it when he first arrived, noting absently that it concerned some confidence man operating throughout Montana Territory. The sketch had been crude, the kind of generic rendering that could have fit half the territory's population. Benjamin had filed it away mentally and thought no more of it. But now, looking at Harrison's profile as the banker turned toward the door, Benjamin saw the resemblance with the clarity of revelation. Same narrow nose, slightly hooked at the bridge. Same set to the jaw, strong but not quite square. Same way of holding his head, chin lifted just a fraction too high, the unconscious arrogance of a man who believed himself smarter than his surroundings. The beard in the poster was fuller, more unkempt, and the hair darker without the distinguished silver at the temples. But fifteen years and some deliberate grooming could account for that. A man could change many things about his appearance, but the underlying bone structure remained constant. Benjamin had learned to read faces during the war. You had to, when survival might depend on distinguishing friend from foe in the chaos of battle, when a spy could wear either uniform depending on which lines he was crossing. He'd carried that skill into civilian life, finding it useful in poker games and town politics alike. Now it was telling him something that made his blood run cold. "Stop right there." Benjamin rose from his seat with deliberate slowness, his black vest pulling tight across his chest as he moved. The vest was one of three he owned, all identical, all practical rather than fashionable. The buttons were horn, not mother of pearl, and the fabric was good wool that would last another decade if properly cared for. His right hand drifted toward his hip, where he'd worn a Colt revolver through most of his adult life. First, as a necessity of war, then as a tool of frontier survival. He'd left off wearing it regularly five years ago when he became mayor, trading the weight of iron for the burden of civic responsibility. The transition had been deliberate, symbolic even. A town mayor shouldn't need to go armed to conduct his business. That was what sheriffs were for, what law and order meant. But old habits died hard, and that morning prompted by nothing more than a vague uneasiness he couldn't quite name, he'd strapped it on. Now he understood why. The leather holster was worn smooth from decades of use, the surface polished by countless drawers and reholsterings. The stitching was his own work, replaced twice over the years as the original had frayed. The weapon came free with the practiced ease of muscle memory too deeply ingrained to fade, the grip settling into his palm like it had never left. The Colt felt heavy in his hand, familiar as an old friend as Benjamin raised it to point at the banker's chest, the barrel aligned with Harrison's third vest button, the one that was slightly newer than the others, recently replaced by someone with more enthusiasm than skill. The room erupted. Eleanor gasped. Reverend Fielding half-stood, one hand raised as if to intervene. Two of the shopkeepers pushed back from the table so fast their chairs overturned. Only Eleanor remained perfectly still, her green eyes moving between Benjamin and the wanted poster with swift comprehension. "Everyone stay seated," Benjamin said, his voice carrying the authority that had once commanded a cavalry troop. "This won't take long." Harrison had frozen mid-step, his portfolio clutched against his chest like a shield. "Have you lost your mind, Thornhill? Put that gun away before someone gets hurt. I might ask you the same thing, Mr. Cobb. Or should I call you by your real name?" Benjamin gestured with the revolver toward the wanted poster. "Take a look at that, everyone. Really look at it." The banker's face had gone the color of old parchment. "That's ridiculous. That poster is fifteen years old. It could be anyone." "Could be," Benjamin agreed. "But it's not just anyone, is it? It's you, Thomas Wickham. Wanted for bank fraud in Colorado, land swindles in Wyoming, and if memory serves, something involving forged mining claims in California." Eleanor rose from her precarious chair, moving to stand beside the poster. She studied it, then looked at Harrison with the same critical eye she turned on students who claimed their dog had eaten their homework. "He's right," she said quietly. "The resemblance is remarkable once you notice it. Same nose, same chin, same way of holding his head, even the ears match." "This is insanity." Harrison's voice rose, desperation creeping into his carefully cultivated eastern accent. "I'm a respected banker with credentials from Denver. I have letters of reference from prominent men." "Forged, no doubt," Benjamin said, "along with your construction estimates. You were going to embezzle eight thousand dollars from this town's treasury, weren't you? Build your non-existent bank, pocket the money, and disappear before anyone figured out the truth." The silence that followed was broken only by the ticking of the wall clock and the distant sound of children playing in the street. Benjamin could see the calculation in Harrison's eyes, the swift assessment of options and risks. "Ej reverend Fielding," Benjamin said without taking his eyes off the banker. "Would you be so kind as to fetch the sheriff? He's likely at the saloon playing dominoes with Doc Miller." The reverend nodded, edging toward the door with the careful movements of a man trying not to startle a nervous horse. His footsteps echoed on the wooden stairs as he descended, then faded into the afternoon bustle of Main Street. Harrison's shoulders sagged, the portfolio slipped from his fingers, landing on the floor with a soft thud. Inside, Benjamin could see the corners of what looked like blank bank drafts and sheets of letterhead from institutions that probably existed only in the banker's imagination. "How did you know?" Harrison's voice was quiet now, stripped of its pretension. "I was careful. The credentials were perfect." "You were," Eleanor said, surprising them both. "Your mistake wasn't in the forgeries. It was in underestimating a schoolteacher's suspicion of things that seemed too good to be true. When you produced three estimates that convenient, all arriving at the same figure, it struck me as rather like three students turning in identical essays." Despite everything, Benjamin felt a smile tugging at his mouth. "She's caught more than one plagiarist that way." Harrison looked between them, something like admiration mixing with his defeat. "A schoolteacher and a has-been mayor. I've been undone by a collection of provincial amateurs." "Has-been?" Eleanor's eyebrow arched. "Benjamin was a cavalry captain before he came here. Fought at Stones River and Chickamorga. If memory serves, he also tracked down the Hoskins gang single-handed back in seventy-nine. The Hoskins brothers weren't particularly bright," Benjamin said mildly, though he couldn't help feeling pleased by Eleanor's defense. "And there were only two of them. You, on the other hand, have been running confident schemes for what, twenty years?" "Twenty-three." Something like pride flickered across Harrison's face before resignation settled back in. "Started with a crooked Pharaoh game in Sacramento, worked my way up to more sophisticated operations, and now you've worked your way into a Montana jail cell," Benjamin said. "To progress of a sort, I suppose." The sound of boots on the stairs announced the sheriff's arrival. Sam Whitmore burst through the door, his hand on his own pistol, taking in the scene with quick assessment. He was Eleanor's younger brother, a fact that had initially caused some gossip when Benjamin had appointed him sheriff, but the man had proven himself capable enough. Eleanor. He looked to his sister first, concern evident in his face, before noticing Benjamin's drawn weapon. "Ben. What in blazes is going on here? Our banker is actually a wanted criminal," Eleanor said calmly, as if she were commenting on the weather. "Thomas Wickham, if the poster is accurate, Benjamin rather brilliantly identified him." Benjamin lowered the Colt, thumb easing the hammer back to rest. "Eleanor's the one who caught him. I just recognized the resemblance." Sam moved forward, producing a pair of iron manacles from his belt. Harrison offered his wrists without resistance, his face settling into lines of weary acceptance. As the cuffs clicked shut with that distinctive crack of metal on metal, Benjamin felt an odd satisfaction. It was the same sound that had announced the start of this whole affair when Eleanor's chair leg gave way. "There's reward money on Wickham," Sam said, reading the poster more carefully now. "Five hundred dollars for information leading to his capture. That'll be split between you two, I reckon. Give it to the school fund," Eleanor said immediately. "We could use new readers. The current ones are falling apart." Benjamin slid the revolver back into its holster, the weight settling against his hip like it had never left. "Agreed. Though I'd argue you deserve the lion's share, I just provided the dramatic finish." "Dramatic is putting it mildly," Eleanor said, but her eyes were warm with something that might have been approval. "You gave me a terrible fright, drawing that weapon. I thought for a moment you'd gone senile and decided to shoot up a town meeting." "Not quite yet," Benjamin said. "Though I'd understand if folks wanted a younger mayor after today's theatrics. Don't be ridiculous. This from Mrs. Abernathy, the grocer's wife, who had remained silent throughout the entire confrontation. You just saved this town eight thousand dollars and exposed a dangerous criminal. I'd say that's worth another term at least." A murmur of agreement ran through the assembled citizens. Even Reverend Fielding, returned from his errand, was nodding approval. Benjamin felt his face warm with unexpected pleasure. Sam led Harrison toward the door, the prisoner moving with the resigned shuffle of a man who knew the game was over. At the threshold, he paused and looked back at Benjamin. "And for what it's worth, Thornhill, you would have made a terrible mark, too observant by half," Harrison managed a rueful smile. "Though I'll admit, I didn't see the schoolteacher coming. That was clever of her." "Miss Whitmore has always been full of surprises," Benjamin said, and was rewarded by the faint blush that colored Eleanor's cheeks. After Sam and his prisoner departed, the remaining meeting attendees began to gather their things, chattering with the animated energy that followed any dramatic event. Benjamin found himself standing beside Eleanor, both of them watching the Exodus with shared amusement. "I suppose we never did get around to discussing the road repairs," Eleanor observed. "There's always next week's meeting," Benjamin said. "Though it's likely to seem rather dull after today." Dull might be pleasant for a change. Eleanor moved to pick up her reticule from the broken chair, but Benjamin reached it first, handing it to her with a small bow that was only slightly mocking. "Thank you," she hesitated, then added, "and thank you for earlier, for trusting my investigation rather than dismissing it as female intuition or some such nonsense." "I learned long ago not to dismiss your insights," Benjamin said, feeling the weight of the years between that first observation and now. "You caught on to the Fletcher boy cheating at arithmetic before I'd even noticed he was enrolled in school. Told me he was copying answers from the girl next to him, and when I expressed skepticism, you showed me three weeks' worth of identical mistakes, same wrong answers, in the same order, because neither of them understood the material. That was seven years ago." Eleanor's voice was soft with surprise, her green eyes wide. "You remember that level of detail. I remember a great many things about you, Eleanor." The words came out before Benjamin could stop them, carrying more weight than he'd intended, revealing more than he'd planned to show. The room suddenly felt very quiet despite the lingering bustle of departing townspeople. He could hear his own heartbeat, steady but insistent, like a drum marking time. "And your observations about people, your dedication to your students, the way you never back down when you know you're right, the way you tilt your head slightly to the left when you're concentrating on a problem, the fact that you prefer tea to coffee but will drink coffee if tea isn't available because you believe complaining about such things is poor form." She looked at him for a long moment, green eyes searching his face. Whatever she saw there seemed to satisfy some question she'd been asking herself because her expression softened into something warmer than approval. "Benjamin Thornhill," she said, "are you about to ask me to dinner?" He'd faced Confederate cavalry charges with less trepidation than he felt in that moment, but he managed to keep his voice steady. "And I was considering it, though I'm aware your late husband has been gone less than two years. I don't want to presume anything inappropriate." "Henry has been gone for exactly twenty-one months," Eleanor said, "and he would have been the first to tell you that life is for the living. Besides, I'm fairly certain he'd approve of you. He always said you were the only honest politician he'd ever met. High praise, considering he thought most politicians should be shot on sight. He was very particular about his shooting list." Eleanor's smile was fond and sad at once. "So, yes, Benjamin, I would be pleased to join you for dinner, though I should warn you that I'm inclined to be rather particular about my beef steak. Mrs. Crawford's hotel dining room tends to overcook everything. Then perhaps you'd allow me to cook for you instead?" Benjamin heard himself say. "I make a tolerable roast, and my biscuits are reportedly better than the reverend's wife's." "Though you didn't hear that from me." Eleanor laughed, a sound like bells in a high wind. A mayor who cooks and recognizes wanted criminals. "You're full of surprises yourself, Mr. Thornhill. I try to keep life interesting," he said, offering her his arm. "Shall I walk you back to the schoolhouse?" She took his arm with the natural grace of someone who'd been waiting for the invitation. They descended the town hall steps together, emerging into the golden light of late afternoon. Main Street bustled with its usual commerce, wagons loading supplies, children racing between buildings, the blacksmith's hammer ringing against his anvil. "Do you think anyone will believe what happened in there?" Eleanor asked as they walked. "It sounds rather like something from a dime novel. Respectable banker revealed as notorious criminal during routine town meeting." "Oh, they'll believe it," Benjamin said. "By tomorrow, half the town will be claiming they suspected him all along. By next week, someone will be saying they recognized him the moment he arrived. Human nature tends toward embellishment." "Then we should make sure we tell the story accurately first," Eleanor said, "before it turns into something ridiculous, like you shooting him out of his boots or me hypnotizing him with feminine wiles." "Though you did somewhat hypnotize him with your detective work," Benjamin pointed out. "That telegram inquiry was inspired." "It was obvious once I thought about it," Eleanor said, but he could hear the pleasure in her voice. "Anyone can forge a letter. It's much harder to fake an entire construction company." They had reached the schoolhouse, a whitewashed building that looked almost cheerful in the slanting sunlight. Children's drawings decorated the windows, and through the open door Benjamin could see the neat rows of desks waiting for tomorrow's lessons. Eleanor paused at the steps, turning to face him. "I should warn you that I'm a terrible cook myself. My students would tell you that I once burned water trying to make tea. Then it's fortunate I'm willing to handle the culinary duties," Benjamin said. "Friday evening, if that suits you, say six o'clock?" "Friday at six would be lovely." Eleanor squeezed his arm gently before releasing it. "And Benjamin, thank you for not hesitating today. I know drawing a weapon in a town meeting isn't exactly proper mayoral conduct. Sometimes proper conduct needs to take a brief holiday," he said. "Besides, it's been years since I had occasion to use that particular skill set. Rather satisfying to know I haven't gone completely soft." She smiled at that, then turned and climbed the schoolhouse steps. At the door she looked back once, her expression warm with promise and possibility. Benjamin tipped his black hat to her, feeling lighter than he had in months. He walked back toward his own house, thinking about the events of the afternoon. The sound of Harrison being led away in iron cuffs, that distinctive crack of metal meeting metal had marked the end of one chapter and the beginning of something else entirely. Benjamin had seen enough of life to know that second chances were rare, and rarer still at his age. Men his age were supposed to be settling into comfortable routines, not starting new courtships. But comfort and happiness were different things. He was learning, very different indeed. The afternoon sun cast long shadows across Main Street, painting everything in shades of amber and gold. A group of children raced past, playing some elaborate game involving sticks and a tin can. They waved at him, shouting greetings, he returned with a smile. Their energy was infectious, reminding him that life went on regardless of dramatic revelations or unexpected romance. As he passed the mercantile, old Tom Braddock called out from his porch rocker, a piece of furniture that had been part of the Main Street landscape for as long as anyone could remember. Tom had fought in the Mexican War and claimed to have once played cards with Kit Carson, though the details of that story changed with each telling. "Heard you had some excitement at the meeting, mayor. That true about the banker?" "True enough," Benjamin confirmed, pausing at the foot of the porch steps. Tom's eyes were sharp despite his age, missing nothing. "Miss Whitmore caught him red-handed with fraudulent documents, saved the town a considerable sum." "That woman's sharp as a tack," Tom said admiringly, spitting tobacco juice into the brass spittoon beside his chair with practiced accuracy. "Always has been. Reminds me of my Martha, God rest her soul. Women like that, they see through nonsense faster than most men can spot it coming. You'd be a fool not to court her properly if you don't mind me saying so. And I know you don't, because you never were one for false pride." Benjamin felt his face warm. "The whole town going to have an opinion on that?" "Course they will," Tom said cheerfully. "Hey, but seeing as most folks think you two are well-suited, I'd say you're safe from too much gossip. Just don't wait too long. Life's short, and none of us are getting younger." "Wise words from a philosopher," Benjamin said dryly. But he was smiling as he continued down the street. His house sat at the end of Main Street, a modest frame building with a small garden that had seen better days. The white paint was peeling in places, testimony to hard winters and his own neglect of maintenance. He'd never been much for flowers, found them impractical when vegetables made more sense. But Eleanor had mentioned once, years ago during a town picnic, that she liked iris, purple iris specifically, the deep royal color that reminded her of twilight. He'd filed that information away without quite knowing why, the way you remember small details about people who matter to you. Perhaps he could plant some before Friday. The season was right for it. And Mrs. Anderson at the general store had mentioned receiving a shipment of bulbs just last week. It would give him something to do besides worrying about whether his biscuits would rise properly, whether the roast would be tender enough, whether a woman like Eleanor Whitmore would find anything of value in sharing a meal with a worn-out cavalry officer turned small-town mayor. Inside, he hung his black hat on its peg and unbuckled his gun belt, setting it carefully on the shelf where it had rested for the past five years. The weight of it had felt right that afternoon, necessary even. But looking at it now, Benjamin found himself hoping he wouldn't need to wear it again anytime soon. Though if another crisis arose, at least he'd know Eleanor would be there, sharp-eyed and fearless, ready to catch whatever details he might miss. It was a comforting thought. Benjamin moved to the window, watching the town settle into evening. Benjamin moved to the window, watching the town settle into evening. Somewhere down the street, the sheriff was probably processing his prisoner, filling out the necessary paperwork to claim the reward money. The town council would need to find a new banker, a task that would require considerably more scrutiny this time around, but those were problems for another day. Tonight, he had a menu to plan and a house to clean. He hadn't entertained in years, hadn't wanted to. The death of his wife eleven years ago had left him content with solitude, or so he'd told himself. Now, thinking about Friday evening, about Eleanor's laugh and the way she'd looked at him in the town hall, he realized that contentment and happiness were different things entirely. He'd been content for a long time. Perhaps it was time to try for happiness again. The sun dipped below the mountains, painting the sky in shades of amber and rose. Benjamin lit a lamp against the gathering darkness, already making mental lists. Potatoes, he'd need potatoes, and fresh butter from the dairy. Maybe some of those fancy preserves Mrs. Anderson made, the ones with actual fruit chunks instead of just sugar and seeds. He smiled at his own nervousness. Sixty-three years old, veteran of a war and countless frontier hardships, and he was fretting about dinner like a green boy courting his first sweetheart. Eleanor would find it amusing, probably. That thought made him smile wider. Outside, Copper Falls settled into its evening rhythms. The saloon piano started up, playing something cheerful and slightly off-key. Dogs barked at shadows. A baby cried, then quieted. All the small sounds of a town going about its business, unaware that its mayor was planning the most important meal of his later years. Benjamin returned to his planning with renewed focus. He'd get everything right, or as right as an aging bachelor could manage. Eleanor deserved nothing less, and if his biscuits did turn out better than Mrs. Fielding's, well, that would just be a pleasant bonus. The thought of the reverend's wife reminded him of something else Eleanor had said, about the reward money going to the school fund. That was typical of her, thinking of others before herself. Henry Whitmore had been a lucky man, and he'd known it. Benjamin intended to be just as fortunate if Eleanor would have him. He sat down at his kitchen table, pulling out paper and pencil to make proper lists. The evening stretched ahead, full of pleasant planning and anticipation. Tomorrow, he'd face the town's questions and the council's concerns about finding a replacement banker. He'd deal with the inevitable embellishments to the story, the curious looks, the matchmaking suggestions, but tonight belonged to possibility, to the unexpected joy of a simple dinner invitation accepted. To the memory of Eleanor's smile and the promise of Friday evening. To the strange way life could surprise you, even after sixty-three years, with moments of grace disguised as town meetings gone spectacularly awry. Benjamin wrote roast beef at the top of his list, then paused, pencil hovering over the paper. He added iris bulbs as an afterthought, then polish good boots and clean house thoroughly. The list grew, practical and hopeful in equal measure. When he finally set down the pencil and extinguished the lamp, heading upstairs to bed, he was still smiling. Tomorrow would bring its usual complications and responsibilities. But Friday would bring Eleanor, and that was something worth any amount of preparation. The night settled over Copper Falls with its customary quiet, broken only by the distant howl of coyotes and the closer sound of the saloon's revelry. In his jail cell, Thomas Wickham contemplated his mistakes. In the schoolhouse, Eleanor worked by lamplight, grading papers and thinking about Friday with a mixture of nervousness and pleasure she hadn't felt in years. And in his modest house at the end of Main Street, Benjamin Thornhill lay awake, planning a menu with the same tactical precision he'd once applied to cavalry maneuvers. Life, he reflected, had a sense of humor. You spent years protecting a town, maintaining order, keeping the peace, and then one afternoon, everything changed because a schoolteacher caught a criminal and you remembered how to draw a revolver fast enough to matter. He fell asleep thinking about iris and roast beef, and the way Eleanor's eyes had warmed when he mentioned remembering things about her. It was, all things considered, a considerably better ending to the day than he'd anticipated when he'd strapped on his gun belt that morning. But then, Copper Falls had always been full of surprises. That was part of its charm. It turns out breaking a chair leg makes a better icebreaker than any fancy speech I could have given.